Good evening. We called to order the regular meeting, the West Valley City Council. Our study meeting went over just a little bit. So we're starting just a few minutes late. We note that we have six members of the council present. And Councilman Steve Vincent is excused tonight, will not be with us. With that then, we have the opening ceremony. And that is my opportunity tonight. Traditionally, we do the pledge, and we will do that in just a moment. We did have just this last week, a Veterans' Event on Veterans' Day that the city held at the Cultural Celebration Center. We had a large number of veterans who came and participated in that, where we recognized them. Veterans' Day, of course, is a very special day for those who have served in the military, especially those who have served in combat situations. And we had a number of those. We actually had three World War II veterans in attendance there. One of those, actually, we had to do it sitting down because they were at that age where most of them are just about gone. But to stand and recite with them the Pledge of Allegiance is a very special event. And because of the many articles in the media regarding that, certainly, we would encourage you to remember those veterans, especially our World War II veterans, because they are very quickly leaving us. There are less than 5,000 left in Utah. They are all in their 90s. We're losing them fairly rapidly. So as you say the pledge tonight, just think about those veterans who have served us and who allow us to be able to stand here tonight and to meet together in such great circumstances. If you'll please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some special recognitions tonight. We note that we have in the audience with us Jake Fitzimana, who's a soon-to-be-elected official. Recently was elected to the city council and will be joining us. We traditionally recognize elected officials. I don't see any others here. We also have a scout troop here, or some scouts here. Traditionally, we invite a young man to represent them and tell us three things. Why you're here, your troop or den number, or den, pack number, gotta get that right. And then just the schools you attend, so we see what part of the valley or the city you're from. You don't have to tell us your names. And just come up to the microphone and do those in any order you want. Your troop number, schools you attend, and what you're working on tonight.
Tonight, we're gonna work on how to make the world a better place. The school we go to is Monroe and Inzine.
Do you remember your troop number?
3844.
3844, okay. Thank you very much for doing that, and welcome here tonight. Scouts traditionally, or camp scouts traditionally make up a significant attendance group at our council meetings. Tonight's different. There's a lot of people here. So with that, then the approval of our minutes of October 24th. A motion from the council.
Move for approval of the minutes of October 24th. Second.
Any discussion? Looks like they're okay the way they are. All in favor of approving the minutes. Please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Minutes passed unanimously. They are approved. Next, we want to go now to our award ceremonies and proclamations portion of our agenda. And first, we have a recognition for our California wildfire deployment. And I need a little help on that. Who's doing that?
Mayor, Chief Evans mentioned to me that somebody was gonna introduce the gentleman. I believe it was Chief Fox. Is that right, Jeff?
That's news to me. We'll let Chief Mike take care of it.
I just wanted to put Jeff on the spot. It's Chris Mike, Chief Chris Mike, Mayor, if he's there.
Okay. Please come forward.
Thank you for this opportunity. The four members that I have with me were part of the Northern California Strike Team that deployed to California. They're four among about 40 firefighters that specialize in our law and firefighting and urban interface. Set the page out. These guys within five minutes says, "I'm in, no questions asked." So they did a great job, represented the city and the state, did an awesome job. So we got Captain Chuck Cruz, Engineer Brett Rosenkrantz, Critical Care Paramedic Tommy Lloyd, and Firefighter Ben Lloyd.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. This highlights the fact that not only do our firefighters do a great job taking care of our own city, but they stand ready to assist anyone in need and to represent us around the state, and certainly even in this case, in California. So thank you very much. We appreciate the great work that you do.
That is true.
Okay. Next, we have our Employee of the Month Award. Matt Atkinson, Public Works Department. I think Councilwoman Lang is ready with that?
Yes, is Matt here? Matt Atkinson was nominated by Tracy Catmore in evidence. She's not waving, so I don't know where she's at. I would like to nominate Matt Atkinson for Employee of the Month. I have seen him go above and beyond in many cases with assisting employees of West Valley City. And it is for this reason that I think he is very deserving of this award. The following are quick examples that have made him stand out. I had parked my car in the parking lot, and when I was ready to leave, I found it with a flat tire. Matt came quick to my aid and offered to change it. I was in need of a new tire, so he pumped it up to get me to Costco so I could buy a new one. It was so nice to have had his help to get me on my way. Example two is evidence had received newer and more updated public drug boxes and needed to switch out the old ones for the new. Matt helped make the switches and even loaded the boxes in his truck to take them to be discarded. He assisted us from start to finish. Fellow, oh, number three, sorry. He's very good at what he does. Fellow coworker and single mom had a piece of her siding come off at her house and didn't know what she was going to do to get it fixed. I heard Matt offer her his help if she needed to fix it. These are just a few out of many, many situations that show Matt's willingness to go above and beyond to assist his fellow employees on a day-to-day basis. He is very deserving of this award, and we are thankful for all Matt does. So Matt, if you would come up and get this.
Okay, next, we come to the public comment period on our agenda. We have 10 people who have signed up to speak. Now, by our rules, and I need to check with the council on this, we only allow 30 minutes. So the question is, do we want to just have six people speak for five minutes each? Or do we say, let's hold it to three minutes to give everyone a chance? Okay. That'll be fine. I assume all of you signed up here to speak. Now, so that you are aware, it is not a discussion with the council. By state law, we can only discuss policy issues that are on our agenda. And so we may not make much comment or feedback, but we will put it on our agenda for the following week and have some discussion on that. So that'll be done in our study meeting next week. So if we don't respond a whole lot, it's not that we're not listening or don't care. It's just that we have to be circumspect in how much we spend on each of these items if they're not on our agenda. Okay? With that, we'll begin then, and we do have a timer here. This is brand-new tonight. We'll go see how it works. And so Nicole is going to help us with that. We'll call up first Evelyn Owen.
Hello. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for listening to my comments. My name is Evelyn Owen. I'm a home childcare provider. I live in West Valley City. I don't represent an organization, but here I brought with me, as you can see, other home care providers in West Valley City. And I'd like to ask them to stand briefly, just to show the council who all you are. These people you see standing behind me are all directly impacted by West Valley's daycare regulations. Thank you. You guys can be seated. So the city code does not match the state's childcare limits. West Valley, I'm so nervous, sorry. Code 7-7-1154B limits the number of non-family member children in a home daycare. West Valley allows six children with two infants, up to eight children, no infants. And an infant is considered anyone under the age of two. In contrast, the Utah Department of Health allows a daycare provider to have up to eight children with two infants, and all the way up to 16 with a second caregiver if they have sufficient square footage, and that's determined by the state when they come out. Other cities around us have limits that either mirror the state, the Utah statute, or at least higher than West Valley City. The option to have home childcare is very important to many families in our community. However, having a limited number of children, far less than what the state allows, reduces home care options and it favors commercial daycare centers. Many parents who prefer home daycare will have to separate their family to two different locations or find a home provider outside of the city. Providers in most cases will have much difficulty covering operating costs at these low limits. Oftentimes, they have to turn whole families down. A lot of times, what happens is we have six state children during the day, and when school gets out, the parent is unable to get off at the same time, and the school lets out. So having the state, the state satisfies this. We either have to leave our slot open for that older sibling, or we just have to turn that family down or turn that sibling down. Providers with six children or grandchildren living in the home aren't even able to offer home care. It really is down to, we either have to change professions or we have to move to another city. Children should be allowed to be cared for in a home setting. However, it's not possible or not easy with the current regulations. Therefore, it is our request that West Valley City align your regulations with Utah statute. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Under certain circumstances, we do allow clapping in that. But Marlon, during a public comment period, we want to reserve it for the speaker. So save your applause. Okay, next, we have Hen Tran.
Is he not able to come to my answer?
Not able to come, okay. Andy Fan. Oh, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
Well, I have to add a little comment. I have a similar agenda to what she's saying. And with my situation, you know, I, when the economy is bad, I lost my job two years ago. So I make a commitment to help my family and I do the daycare with my wife. So two of us are the provider, and we are good providers, and we do it the number so we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly Bertas.
Hi, my name's Kelly Bertas. I'm sure you're all aware of me. Been here numerous times. First off, thank you for all the changes happening. Now, just listen to these people here. This is one that needs to change. Having kids in a home where they're being cared for is the most important thing. And putting them in a commercial situation, they're not well taken care of as well. So thank you for what you do. Again, one of my big concerns is Mount Cora. We still haven't ever seen any changes or heard anything of them with the weed control. But the biggest thing I'm seeing now, the colder weather is coming, and they've really stirred up all the fields, rodent and mice problems. They are bringing them out of their burrows or whatever now because they have, you know, brought the overpasses up and starting to get it going in my area. And boy, we have a lot of mice problems, both on the east side and west side of the Mount Cora area, just off of Marshall Drive in Tillman area. It's really beginning to be a nuisance. But the weeds is a big concern of mine, and this does involve the state. But I think you guys have a lot of say-so and push. This is between 30 feet of south, 5,600 west, and 6,000 west, near the park, on both sides of the road, more north than any. The weeds are out of control. This is supposed to be our city, to make it look good. I mean, it's hideous looking. It really is. And yet, we have a park right there that brings people from all around this valley during football season, baseball season. It looks bad. It's not a very good sight to look at. Parking on streets again. How many cars do we allow in each family dwelling? I'm seeing more people move in where they have more than an extra family member. How many families do we allow in single-family dwellings? I mean, it's getting to be sometimes four or five families in my area. And that's not right. Because it puts a lot more cars on the street, impacts that. And like I've said many times, on my circle, Zionist circle, that numerous times, you could not get a fire truck down there because of the cars parking on both sides of the street. This is an emergency danger. And I wish that somebody would periodically look at that area and target some of these cars that are parked across the area. This is our safety on our street. And it's an irritant. It's an irritant. Not only that, with the winter coming on, I hope that you enforce the code about parking on the streets for snowplows. Seems like mine at the end of the circle, I get all the snow that does get pushed, but they go around all these vehicles, and I'm getting old. I'm getting hard to move the snow around through my mailbox that they block every time. So share the snow, spread it down the street, but let's get these cars off there. Again, thank you for what you've been doing and changes that you've made. I'm looking forward, again, for a whole new season coming up here after this year. So, sorry, I missed the last couple of weeks. I didn't realize you guys did this weekly. But I'm sure you should be seeing my face anyway. So it's a pleasant sign. This time, I sent a groucho. So again, oh, E.T. Technos, he is smelling again, so, you know, chalk that one up. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Norma Garcia.
Hi, my name is Norma Garcia. I provide the childcare in the home. Just one thing that I'd like to know, and then all providers, we are prepared for work in a home. And then, for example, I am teacher at the preschool in my country, and I haven't been working in here, living in here around 17 years. And then I haven't worked in my home around 15 years ago. And then, but we took classes every month, and then we took classes for the GR2. And then we are preparing for keep the kids in my home. And then only the thing that I'd like to, I'd like to know is, because why is the reason if you, they stay safe, for example, I can keep in my home 16 kids or 12 kids, and then they reduce because they stay safe one team and the city stays another? And that's why, and then we are prepared for that working at the home? Just one thing. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have LeAnn Pearson.
Hi, I'm LeAnn Pearson, and this is one of my clients, Julie Christensen. I am an in-home daycare provider. And this particular statute that is being talked about tonight directly impacts me and Julie and her family. I currently watch her son, and I used to watch her daughter before she went to school also. And Julie is expecting twins. So if I am going to take her two babies, which I am planning on, because we've become very good friends also, I am going to have to actually let go two of my other clients to make room for these babies. And in a sense, that is $1,000 a month of income that I will be losing just to keep, to be able to continue caring for these children. And so, so I do not reside in West Valley, but I actually teach in West Valley. And I have been having my kids in daycare in West Valley for the past seven years since they were born. I used to live in West Valley. I got to see Mayor Bigelow yesterday come to my school. But for me, as a teacher, it was severely, my husband also teaches in West Valley. So it would severely impact our family and force us almost out of this area because we want to have our kids close to us. And as a family already facing the fear of twins, it's quite intimidating. But then to fear having daycare costs and things like that increase significantly because of statutes like this, then it really affects my family and our careers in the long run.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Marlin Nielsen.
I'm an employee for the LDS Church. And as an employee, we maintain the buildings here. We have 29 buildings in West Valley City. And I noticed that the fire hydrants in our buildings were really needed, painting really bad. So we talked with Granger Hunter Improvement District, and they says, "If you'll paint them, we'll supply all the paint for free for you." And so we painted 60 fire hydrants about in all in these 29 buildings. And it looked so good, we took the rest, the leftover paint back to Granger Hunter. And they says, "If you know of anybody who will paint fire hydrants, we'll supply the free paint, and they'll supply the labor." And so I was proposed to you that we, as community, anybody who needs to do community service, whether they were boys who were caught doing graffiti or something, or that they get asked to paint fire hydrants as their community service. If you want to really see some really nice paint jobs, just go to some of the LDS churches, especially the Lighthouse Church, if you're familiar with that one, you'll see that. You'll see an example of the type of paint that Granger Hunter supplies. And so if we've got at least 500 fire hydrants that are really in need of painting, it would really make West Valley City really look nice to have them all painted. And so that's my proposal.
Thank you very much. Next, Megan Mansfield.
Hi, I'm Megan Mansfield, and I am a home childcare provider. And I agree with all these other ideas that already came up. I just wanted to let you know that it would be super hard for me to even think about getting any kids in my care, because I love them all just like they're my own. And I think that's why parents love to bring them to home childcare providers instead of a facility, because they feel like, you know, we're gonna love their kids just as much as they do, and we do. They love their kids. And my kids just think, "Oh, you know, I got another addition to another brother or sister," and they just, they love each other. And I've worked in, I have worked in daycare centers, and it's not the same. You got two, like, one, two, like 12 to 16 kids to yourself, and it's hard to give that individual attention. And when I'm at my home, I have eight, and I can give them individual attention because I do also have, my mom helps out, so that helps out. That I can give, we can do like four on four. I have four, she'll have four. And so we can give them that good attention. But I just wanted to come here to support this change because it does affect me and all my families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Amy Christensen.
Good evening. Thank you. I represent PFCCA in the Professional Family Childcare Association of Utah. We are a nonprofit organization. I'm here to provide assistance for all the childcare providers that are here. I am currently a childcare provider in the city of Taylorsville, which they allow us to have 12 children to one provider. With you reducing your limits down to that, you are going to force providers to not be licensed. And you want your providers to be licensed by the state. They call it underground childcare. PFCCA represents and supports 100% with the childcares. Another thing, I'm a little nervous, sorry. I'm very passionate about it. In-home childcare is a home away from home for these children. By reducing these numbers, you are forcing these providers to have to choose. And a lot of it is, in this area, you cannot charge what normally, like a center. So for instance, a center charges up for an infant $700, $800. Where an in-home family provider charges $600 to $650. provider charges 600 to 650. That is a huge difference for not only your citizens, but for these families, where a lot of them are single mothers. Care About Childcare is an organization here with Utah. We, they have done research where West Valley actually has the most requests for in-home childcare when they call to find out where there's, um, openings in the area. On an average, they get, for instance, Taylorsville gets maybe 68 calls a month, where West Valley gets anywhere between 100 to 150 a month for just in-home childcare. Eight to one ratio is, is totally fine, even with having two infants. You do get that one-on-one. Most providers have their spouses helping them, or have like their parents are there helping them, their older teenagers are there helping them. And, um, I honestly, my personal opinion, I, I have 12. I think limiting them to six, even to eight, um, I would like you guys to even consider maybe possibly letting them have 12. Um, you've, you've got a lot of requests for it. A lot of parents want to bring their children to an in-home daycare, because that is like their home away from home. And a lot of these providers are taking classes through Care About Childcare. A lot of them are working on their CDAs, which is, um, you know, accreditation for them in their home. And by lowering your numbers or reducing that, you're going to force some of these providers, because this is their sole income. And, um, you're going to force them to not be licensed. And then you're going to end up having that potential where children might be harmed, or it's not a safe environment, where the state of Utah can come in. And if you look around, um, Sandy had, their ratios used to be eight. They now allow 16 with two providers. Taylorsville is 12 with two providers. You've got Salt Lake City that will allow you to have up to 16 with two providers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm thinking y'all got to be an email, but I'm hoping that nobody got to be an email.
Well, if you're on your remarks, let's make sure we get them on the microphone. Give me two, I can pull them apart.
This is an email that I sent out to all of you. Um, I'm hoping I didn't make some mistakes when I voted this last go-round. Um, I'm hoping maybe the city's email was down, because I sent a copy of this to every one of you, and I didn't get one response back. I didn't get a bite me. I didn't get anything from anybody. I've stood up here and I've supported all of your property taxes that you've wanted to increase. I've tried to support the city in a lot of areas that you want to go, and I don't support you in everything that you do. But I think on something like this, any citizen deserves some kind of response. Even if you'd have sent it back to me, uh, I fairly regularly use the, uh, the emoji somebody giving you the finger. You could have sent that back to me. But, uh, I sent this to everybody. I didn't send one to Wayne. I apologize for some of the, uh, probably the spelling errors, the grammar errors, everything that I put in there. I didn't get one of them come back with the exception of the mayor's, and I resent his. So, um, you know, what can I say? I don't know. I'm pretty disappointed if you said you didn't get it, that they didn't come back. Um, I've already asked Sam if he could put a spot on the email list where I could just click on, uh, a name, and it would, it would send it to every one of you automatically, so you don't have to punch in every name individually. Because as you can tell by reading this, I'm not a rocket scientist. I just have to work a little harder than most people to make a good living. So, but I take pride in what I do, and I fought and I defended this city with my neighbors on the other side of town. Um, there was some discussion about, uh, this city and the way we're looked at on, uh, in the study meetings today. I've been all over this city with what I do, and there are some real nasty places. But just because we're called West Valley City, the west has already been looked down upon, we need to work on, on, on doing things. I guess my question is, is why are we only going to make one side of 2,700 west look nice? And we're not going to make the other side look nice? It's as nasty looking as the other side. You know, if we're going to do a project, let's do a project right, or don't do it at all. It's kind of my dad's theory. If you can do it for a dollar, he told him to do it for 50 cents. So, uh, you know, I think we need to step up as a city. Once again, I apologize for the, uh, probably the spelling errors and the way I put, but I think you're all smart enough to know how to, uh, to, uh, work around it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's coming awfully close to taking up the half hour. Councilman Bueller was right. They spoke shorter than five minutes. So, I assume everyone got a chance to speak that wanted to. With that, we would say to you that, uh, we will add on to our agenda these issues for our study meeting next week. That's a new process that we're working on and trying out over the next few months to make sure that we're able to discuss these issues. So, for example, a discussion on changing our home care policy will have to be put on to our agenda before we actually do much discussion on it. So, be aware that that should show up on our next council meeting agenda. Be down towards the bottom under potential future agenda items. With that, then, we'll bring it to city manager. Any comments tonight?
No, sir, I don't have any comments tonight. Thanks.
To the council, any comments? Councilman Hune?
Thank you, Leanne. I just want to say thank you, all of you, to come here tonight and express your concern about the childcare provider here in our city. I personally just want to say with you, with my wife, she came here from Vietnam, and she, uh, raised a nurse, and when, when she came here, and she did the same thing what you're doing right now. So, the language, I understand what you're saying. And I want you to know, uh, the mayor says we're going to put it agenda, and just please just, uh, follow with the, um, schedule we have here in our city, and you can go to a meeting next time if you see them. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. We do appreciate your coming. Uh, we will follow up on these items in our next study meeting agenda, which will be next week at 4:30. Okay? So, it's a little different. That's the one where we actually talk about issues and discuss them and ask questions, et cetera. And then we will determine from there a course to pursue, and, uh, at some point in the future, may come back on our agenda where we could take action. So, that helps you know the process. We certainly appreciate your coming. It's great to have so many people come to our council meetings. Uh, we wish more people would take an interest and be active and involved in the issues that go on in our city. All right? With that, then, now, we're not offended if someone has to leave, uh, but we'll now, that's done with our comment period, we'll now go to our resolutions. And, uh, we'll start with Resolution 17 dash 173. This is to authorize the city to, uh, purchase some telecommunications services. Uh, these are services for our phone lines, et cetera. Uh, we're going to go into a three-year contract in order to keep the current price. Uh, we anticipate those will rise. Plus, we're adding additional lines for our incoming and outgoing calls, and that will be a contract for 147,158 dollars. And that looks like that covers the three-year period on that. So, about 4,000, almost 4,100 dollars a month. That is the issue before us. Uh, we do want to make sure we have good phone service and continue to provide, uh, a way to communicate with our citizens as well as they can communicate with us. With that introduction, then, to the council, any comments or motions?
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 17 dash 173.
Second. We have motion in a second before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 17 dash 174. This is a license agreement between our city and the Salt Lake, or excuse me, the Utah and Salt Lake Canal Company for replacement of the 6,400 west bridge over the canal. We are receiving some, uh, federal funds in association with this, but apparently we need to also spend 5,000 dollars, I think is the amount. That's our share of it, which is a small amount, and this will make sure that we get that bridge replaced. Quite a lengthy contract. They want to make sure they're covering it. Uh, but this will be, continue our efforts to replace those bridges around the city. With that introduction, then, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 17 dash 174.
Second. Okay. Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 17 dash 175. This is to add a commemorative street name. That is the name of Cody Brotherson Parkway to 4,100 south between 22nd west to 3,600 west. Officer Brotherson was a former West Valley City resident who was serving as a West Valley City police officer who died in the line of duty, which is fairly well-known. And this will commemorate and remember him, uh, with the Cody Brotherson Parkway. With that introduction, then, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 17 dash 175.
Second.
Property before us, any comments? Seeing no comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, under new business, we have application S dash 15 dash 2017. This is filed by Oakwood Homes, Jake Home, requesting final plan approval for the Villages at West Ridge Phase 3, a public unit development at 5260 south, 5675 west. And so, this is another phase on a project that is going in there. And these will be, let's see, Phase 3 is 28 residential units on 2.9 acres. And there'll be some more. These are, uh, units that range from 1,400 to almost 1,600 square feet. Uh, they will also have an additional 500 square feet in basement. Two spaces parking per garage, or excuse me, per garage, per unit, along with the two-car garage. So, there's plenty of parking. Uh, they're providing 21 guest parking spaces, uh, and a large amount of open space with 1.3 acres in size for use as city park. With that introduction, then, to the council. Still thinking about?
I move for approval of application S dash 15 dash 2017.
Okay, it's property before us. Any comments or discussion? If not, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That is the regular business on our agenda that is concluded. Uh, I now need a motion from the council that we, we, uh, go to an executive session, which in essence is a closed-door session to the public, for the purpose of discussing professional competency. That will excuse all the public from, uh, this meeting, but the motion should include that we will then adjourn without discussing any further business. A motion. Property before us, let's see, we need a second.
Second.
Then, any discussions? Seeing none, we'll, let's see, we don't need a roll call vote on that, do we? I'm going to always be confused on that now. All in favor of adjourning, excuse me, of going to an executive session of the city council to discuss professional competency and then adjourning with no further business, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here tonight.